Good morning, everyone. The March 2020 emergency legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Volkey will lead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please bow your heads with me and pray in the manner that is consistent with your faith as I pray in the manner that's consistent with mine. Lord, we pray right now that in these highly uncertain times, that in this world where so much is changing so quickly and we are just looking for something to hold on to, that you give us wisdom, that you give us understanding, and that you allow us to take the actions that are necessary and right to protect the citizens of our county, our friends, our neighbors, our family members. We just pray for your guidance and your wisdom in these moments. Amen.
The pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are unable to have members of the public in our chambers this morning. As a result, we cannot invite people to address the council on any general topic or invite face-to-face testimony on the bill to be heard and voted on during this emergency session. May I have a motion to suspend Rule 3-105 and Rule 4-104 for this particular occasion?
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy? Oh, apologies. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. The motion to suspend Rules 3, 105 and Rule 4, 104 for this particular occasion is passed.
Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda this morning? Thank you. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 24-20.
Bill Number 24-20, an emergency ordinance concerning general provisions, civil emergencies, for the purpose of extending the proclamation of civil emergency by the county executive through April 4, 2020, or to the date, the civil emergency proclamation for the state of Maryland is approved to be renewed, extended, or terminated by the governor of Maryland or the Maryland General Assembly, and making this ordinance an emergency measure.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is the county executive bill. Mr. Barron, who is coming to the table this morning?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the council. At the table with me from the Office of Law is Mr. Swain. We have several members of the administration in the audience practicing good social distancing. We have Chief Michaels from Office of Emergency Management and Mr. Beecham from Budget. From the administration, we have Matt Power and Chris Trumbauer. First, it's pretty extraordinary times. County Executive Pittman and the entire administration want to express our thanks and deep appreciation to each and every one of you, your staff, the council staff, for the resilience and teamwork that you have demonstrated during these past few weeks. We are grateful for everyone in the county, in county government, and in our community who have united to work together to address the global challenge COVID-19 has created. While these past few weeks have been difficult, we have also seen numerous examples of charity and humanity that reaffirm why our county is the best place for all. As Governor Hogan and health experts have warned us, we expect things to get worse before they get better. That is why we are bringing this ordinance before you. The charter limits the county executive's proclamation of civil emergency to seven days. Extending it requires council approval, which ordinance 2420 grants. On Monday, Dr. Colleen Naramin briefed you, so I'll simply summarize—oh, and Mr. Power was here as well, and Mr. Trumbauer. I'll simply summarize the actions and issues that have taken place since Monday. County parks remain open and free, but playgrounds are now closed and off-limits to visitors. Dr. Colleen Naramin held a livestream to discuss health concerns regarding COVID-19. Those we plan to continue every Wednesday. We closed most county buildings to the public. County buildings will remain open to county employees only until further notice. All upcoming community meetings being held on county property are canceled. County government remains open and critical county government functions and responsibilities continue. The Emergency Operations Center is partially activated. The Joint Information Center has been established to coordinate resources, provide updates, and streamline public messaging. We did discuss on Monday that the county executive signed an executive order that suspends legal and procedural deadlines, including legislation before this council. The governor, in the intervening time, as you all know, has issued several executive orders, including one yesterday that prohibited all events more than 10 people. Shopping malls and all entertainment venues were closed at 5:00 PM yesterday. The BWI terminal is accessible only to ticketed passengers and badged employees. There are making some exceptions to assist the elderly and the disabled. Delivery for restaurants and bars is still allowed. The state is launching a Maryland Unites website to connect volunteers to areas with need. This council has taken important steps to protect the public while continuing the critical work that needs to be done to ensure the health and welfare of our residents. The county executive and the administration fully support the council's action postponing all nonessential legislation and will continue to stand by the members of the legislative branch as we deal with this pandemic. Finally, let me take this opportunity to leave you with a few important places to get information. Most of these emails and numbers have been shared before, but we can't repeat them too much in these days. The Health Department is staffing a COVID-19 health line. That number is 410-222-7256. It's covid19info@aacounty.org to answer residents' health-related questions surrounding COVID-19. The phone lines staffed Monday to Friday from 7:30 to 10:30 at night, 7:30 AM to 10:30 at night, and Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Actions that the county is taking and general frequently asked questions and health information can all be found in one place on the county website. That's aacounty.org/coronavirus. The governor made the call yesterday in his press conference that the Red Cross is experiencing blood shortage, so if you are healthy and able, everybody should donate blood, and you can find out how at redcross.org. In addition to the health officers' Wednesday town halls, the county executive is hosting town halls every Saturday. We intend to continue them until this crisis passes. You can check the county executive's Facebook page at AaCountyExec or YouTube to watch, and questions can be submitted at covidtownhall@aacounty.org. That's covidtownhall@aacounty.org. So with that, please remember to wash your hands, cover your coughs and sneezes, practice social distancing, and stay healthy. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Swain to make a few comments on the legality of the ordinance in front of you, and with that, we are all happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm Greg Swain. I'm the county attorney. Just a couple thoughts on the current state of Anarundel County as well as the state of Maryland. On March 6, Governor Hogan declared a state of emergency and a catastrophic health emergency for the entire state pursuant—and the reason he did that is that triggers certain powers under the state code that are extraordinary and outside the normal scope of executive powers. Pursuant to that declaration, he's issued a number of executive orders at the state level, and he's been very proactive about it. So when we see the governor giving press conferences and announcing certain actions, so far, all of those actions have been reflected by an appropriate executive order. On last Friday, March 13, the county executive declared a local civil emergency pursuant to Article 1, Title 6 of the Anarundel County Code, which works similar to the state declaration, except, of course, it's local. When you look at that code section, you'll see there's a number of enumerated powers, some of which are sort of antiquated and really don't apply much to the current situation, but there is also a general broad grant of powers to take actions necessary to preserve health, safety, and welfare. We have been very careful about the exercise of the county executive's emergency powers. A number of times, we have been prepared to issue an emergency executive order from the county executive on certain topics, and we find that the governor sort of jumps ahead of us in line and makes that declaration. So a couple of the things that we were prepared to do, or at least considering, were already addressed by the governor, particularly things like limiting the size of large gatherings, which he started—he issued a declaration limiting it to 250 people, and then it went down to 50 people, and then another order limiting that to 10 people. Orders to do things like closing malls. We had a lot of discussion about that based on what other jurisdictions have done. The governor went ahead and did that. Closing the casinos. Again, that was done by the state executive order, so the county did not have to address that. The only thing that the county has done, the only thing that the county executive has done pursuant to his emergency powers so far is to issue Executive Order Number 17, and that order suspends the running of most time limits, time periods, et cetera, applicable to actions that are authorized under the county code or even the county charter. The reason that Executive Order Number 17 was necessary is that the governor issued an executive order suspending similar timeframes on the state level, and in that executive order, he gave authority for the local jurisdictions to do it as well. So we had—to do that, not to be in compliance with the governor's executive order, but to take care of the same issues at the local level that the governor's executive order took care of at the state level. So to date, that's the only emergency executive order that the county executive has issued. Under the county code, his emergency declaration has a lifespan of seven days unless it is extended by this body pursuant to an ordinance, and that is the genesis of Bill 2420. The only purpose of Bill 2420 is to extend the emergency declaration until April 4, which is the extent of the governor's original executive civil emergency declaration under state law, which is good for 30 days, or as long as the governor's emergency declaration continues, because the state has the ability to extend that as well. So we want to be running sort of on the same timeframe that the state does. As far as what the county executive might use those emergency powers for, it's hard to say at this time. We've been very careful about limiting the exercise to those powers to things that are absolutely necessary and not available under the normal administrative powers of the county executive. The county executive has done a number of things under his normal powers with regard to the operation of county business in general. We have—the county executive has tried very hard to limit staff to the degree necessary so people aren't congregating, both to comply with what the governor's done, but also for the health and safety of our own workers, while still trying to continue the essential parts of county business. So it's—the flexibility to have those emergency powers available as this goes forward is critical for the county executive. Right now, I don't know of any plans to issue any additional emergency orders, but that could change the moment I leave this chambers. It's a very fast, developing situation, and we think having the county executive with the maximum flexibility to deal with these situations as they unfold is critical to county government. I'm happy to answer any legal questions you may have about Bill 2420.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for that analysis. I'm going to make a comment, then I have a question. So for those of you that don't know, on the county council, every certain number of years, we have a charter review commission. Certainly, we're going to get through this, and this is unprecedented because we can't plan for something that nobody knew was coming. But this is a great opportunity for the public and everyone, once we do that charter review commission, to review these things. The one thing I do want to talk about, though, because I frequently get calls from people about what the governor orders states. For instance, bars and restaurants, you know, are able to now deliver alcohol. You know, now we're limiting it to 10. Do you get a warning? You know, things like that. And so that's one of the concerns that I have. It's not necessarily I disagree with the order, it's how are they implemented? And I want to ask you how the law office has been working with the admin, just explain that. And then the second piece, if the order does come down for shelter in place, which is probably, you know, next, what do we mean by that? Because I'm hearing that people can go to the grocery store, they can go other things. So again, I know you have time to make a legal opinion, but, you know, as people plan for this, what are some of the things that you need to, you know, to have in place? So again, what have you done in terms of working on the governor's orders, you know, giving those opinions? And then the second piece, if there is a shelter in place, or any thoughts county-wide, how would you implement that? Thank you.
Okay. Well, with regard to the governor's executive orders, anyone can go to the governor's website. Governor Larry Hogan, his website, he has a tab for executive orders, and you can look at every executive order he's issued, and they're listed in by date, so you can look at the most recent ones. And as I said, typically, when he makes a declaration or at his press conference of action he's going to take, that is documented by an executive order. And I'll mention that under our local code, any exercise of the county executive's emergency powers must also be documented by executive order. And those executive orders are issued, they're posted on the county website, and they are also disseminated to the general public through the appropriate news media per the county code. So there's a great degree of visibility in these actions. The governor's executive orders are self-executing. In other words, once they're issued, they apply throughout the state, and they are being issued rapidly. For instance, yesterday, we had an executive order of the governor regarding delivery of alcohol, which was—I know—I spoke to many of you about that yesterday. And so he's been very responsive to various concerns of not just local jurisdictions, but also just things on the state level. We analyze every one of those executive orders as they come out and determine what the county—if the county needs to do anything to implement them, or if they are, in fact, self-executing. The one executive order that we had to do something—we felt we had to do something in response to—was the governor's executive order suspending time limits. Simply by the language of the executive order, it was incumbent on the local jurisdictions to take that action, and you'll see a number of local jurisdictions have done exactly the same thing we did, issued an executive order suspending those time limits. And let me say this. I mentioned before that we are being very careful about exercising these emergency powers, and I think this hearing is a very good example of that. We—under the county code, in the charter, there are certain—there's a certain process for considering and introducing emergency legislation. One of those provisions requires that a hearing be held no less than three days after the bill is introduced. We feel that the governor's executive order, as well as the local executive order that we issued, was probably was enough authority for us to supplant that three-day requirement, meaning we could have introduced the bill and voted on at the same time, but we felt that the three-day process and having some time for the council to digest this was appropriate. I say that because in the future, there may be exigent circumstances that would require very fast action, meaning introducing—introduction of an emergency ordinance and hearing that at the same time. If that were going to happen, we feel that would be covered under both the governor's executive order as well as the county executive's executive order. But we are, as I said, being very careful about exercising that power and did not deem it necessary to do that for this hearing. The other question you asked was—well, did I answer your question?
I think you did. Again, I think that we're in uncharted territory. We really don't know where we're headed. I just want to make sure that when we implement these things, people understand, number one, there is legal authority.
Sure.
But number two, how our law office locally is interpreting them. And I think you made it pretty clear that these things that have been approved are from the governor so far, and I certainly support them. I don't have anything against it, but I also get a lot of questions about where is this authority coming from? There's a lot of websites I've seen with misinformation. Like, I saw one that you can't leave your house or are going to take away your guns. I mean, you'd be surprised right now what you're seeing by people, and I think that, you know, this rhetoric that's going around doesn't help, because, like you said, there is a legal authority, there's realms. And particularly, when I think of if we move to a shelter in place, the local government, us sitting here, and the people are going to get the questions. Let's be honest, this all rose downhill. I don't know about you, but I mean, going out to businesses and getting calls, I'm busier than I've ever been before, of people asking me, you know, like, what do I do? You know, my kids have no place to go, is daycare going to shut down? If I'm a restaurant, I can't pay my bills in two weeks. I know, because you're probably getting those emails from me. So what I'm trying to do is, as a local representative, is get as much information as possible, explain the legal pieces, but also, what's that next step? And what is our local jurisdiction, as we heard today, doing to prepare for that next step? Because if there's a shelter in place, does that mean that your kids shouldn't be at the park? I mean, does the county executive shut down the park? Or, you know, if there's situations where there are groups of a certain number of kids, like yesterday, Gork Park, there were 50 teenagers playing at the basketball court. Police came, gave them a warning. I mean, at some point, the governor's made a very stern, and I think the county executive as well, you will have criminal action if you don't follow the order. That's simple and clear, and there is a legal piece for that. So again, I'm just trying to stress about what we're doing, and I think you explained it very clearly, but also, as we move the next steps, how that works. So thank you.
Well, let me say this. As you know, the Office of Law represents the county council as well as the administration. I think what happened with the governor's executive order concerning delivery of alcohol yesterday, which was—is pretty unique. So we felt that it—that was important that all the members of council get a copy of that executive order, as well as our analysis of it. I expect if there's going to be a shelter-in-place executive order, it's going to be very detailed, and it will—it will tell you exactly what needs to be done and what does not need to be done, and we will certainly make sure that that is distributed to all the council members as soon as we hear of it. And you mentioned criminal penalties. All of the governor's executive orders are—provide for criminal penalties. It's a misdemeanor, up to one year imprisonment, $5,000 fine. There are also criminal penalties under county law as well for violation of these. So all of these executive orders have teeth, and they will be enforced.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Hare. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. So Mr. Pruski touched a little bit on what I'm thinking, that so much of what I'm seeing in the community right now is concern over uncertainty. Every day, things change, we're not sure what's coming next, and the types of questions we get a lot of times are, what's coming next? Will the grocery store still be open? Can I get my medicine from the pharmacy? And those sorts of things. And it's—I see it as two parts, right? There's an uncertainty for the duration, and then there's the uncertainty of what necessities can I get? I understand we can't predict the duration necessarily, but I asked Dr. K the same question on Monday, and I'm hoping from the administration's perspective, you might be able to weigh in. How likely is it that you think we would see a closing of even essential things like grocery stores? Because I think it might help people's level of concern or level of worry if they know that even if there's a shelter in place, that next week, they will still maybe be able to go to the grocery store. Maybe it's curbside pickup, maybe it's delivery, but that they're going to be able to get milk or their monthly medicine, whatever it might be, and that they don't need to worry about that piece of it. Do you anticipate from the administration's side any executive order that would somehow restrict or eliminate the ability for those sort of necessities?
Thank you. First, let me say, there is a lot of uncertainty, but the administration has no intention of taking any action as drastic as that in a vacuum. So we would follow the state and the feds if something like that were to come down. It makes no sense in the crisis that we're facing for Anarundel to act in a vacuum. So we can't predict the future, and we're going to respond accordingly as the situation changes, but the county executive has no intention of acting in a vacuum.
Okay. Is there anything else other than what we've seen so far with the duration of the legal timelines and things like that? Is there something else right now that the administration would like to do beyond what the governor's already done?
As Mr. Swain referenced, as we've been looking at things, the governor has been, rightly so, taking these actions on a state level. So while there is nothing at 9:45 or whatever time it is on Friday that we are looking at, that might change by later in the day or next week.
Okay. But as we sit here right now, there's nothing. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my question is a little more in the mundane, but sort of technical. But I had a question about the suspending of time limits. Over the past few months, the council has passed legislation that is due to go into effect in the next few weeks, over the next month or so, and I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question that I would need to get back to me, but some of those new laws do require some administrative sort of front-loading time, time to set up and prepare for them to go into effect. And so I'm wondering if the suspension of the time limits would have any impact on legislation that is due to go into effect in the near future.
Well, the suspension of time limits is meant to preserve rights that would otherwise disappear by expiration of a timeframe. An example, for a subdivision plat, for instance, you're required to take certain actions within a year, or the plat becomes void. That timeline is suspended. And when I say suspended, it means if you are—if you have a year to do it, and your eight months has run, from the date of the executive order, that stops the running of the clock, and it would commence again once the period is over. So the purpose of the suspension of time periods is to preserve rights for folks who would otherwise lose them by the expiration of an applicable time period. In my view, that would not apply to the effective date for legislation.
Okay. And so any administrative responsibilities to make legislation, you know, actually possible and effective to put them into place are still intact?
Would continue. Government is open, government is operating, so there's no question about that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to make a—similar to my colleague, Mr. Pruski. I'll make a comment first, and then I have a couple questions. I had a chance to look at an article that was published today about trusting government, and I think that that's really important, that we address that, particularly for people who are watching at home, who cannot be here because of these restrictions that we have on the ability of folks to congregate. We take that trust very seriously. I know I speak for myself, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but I'm sure I'm speaking correctly when I say that. We are doing everything that we can, the staff here, everyone that is involved in county government, to ensure that transparency remains paramount to what is going on day to day with what we're doing. So I appreciate the question that sort of has been posed in a public forum about what kind of trust are we basically putting into our leaders and saying, do the right thing? But we take that trust very seriously. So these actions that we're taking, these are not being done quickly, and I appreciate, Mr. Swain, you kind of laying out that, in fact, there were minimum requirements which we exceeded for the express purpose of trying to create more trust and transparency in what we're doing. I'll also add something else. In times like these, I think that for all of us, nobody cares what political party we are. Nobody cares whether we're blue, green, red, whatever. This is literally about making sure that essential government functions are happening and that we're providing things for people. And so I want to give credit to the administration for what you all have continued to do. Office of Emergency Management, exactly the same. All of our county folks who have done that, thank you. And I think the governor has done a tremendous job leading in this, and I think the county executive has done a great job sort of going with that and taking the appropriate steps where necessary to keep Anarundel in line. I did have a couple of questions. So I have a sister who I talked to this morning. She lives in Spain. They are under shelter in place right now, and so I've talked to her about what that actually looks like. And they had, I think, 44 people yesterday in her particular little place in Spain that she's in, who were fined for being out in public gatherings and going without a purpose, basically, to and from places. I think that that's probably where we're headed, given the lack of—I'll call it urgency. I think that that's probably where we're headed, given the lack of, I'll call it urgency, that some people have about this crisis and about what's going on, and the fact that we do need to take it very seriously. So, I would hope that we don't get into criminal citations. I know Mr. Pruski asked about that. I would hope we're not getting there. But, I certainly think that imposing fines to let people know this is real is important. And I know that the county government will take those actions to watch for that. I did want to ask, because I know we don't want to get too far ahead of other jurisdictions and the state and things like that. But, I did note that in California, I hadn't been aware of this, but I guess some of the counties had initially put shelter-in-place requirements into effect, and then ultimately, that led the state to get there as well. They obviously have more people, but when I was looking at the number of cases they had as compared to their population versus the number that we had in our population, they were very similar. And in fact, I think we were a little bit higher than they were when I did the math. I'm not a math major. Henry might be better than me at that.
I'll get on it.
Say again?
I'll get him on it for his homeschooling today.
But, that said, I guess, I'm cognizant of we don't want to get too far out ahead, but I also wonder, at a certain point, if the state doesn't take the appropriate action, which it seems like shelter-in-place may ultimately be the appropriate action, are we going to step up at some point? So, I don't know if that's something that either of you can address.
Well, thank you, Councilman. Yeah, what I would say on that is, we have been in constant communication with the administration. I think the governor has done an excellent job. I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't foresee that.
I have one in my office.
The county executive has also been in constant communication with the county execs from other jurisdictions. They are talking daily. Our EOC is partially activated. They are in communication with the Maryland Emergency Management folks, who are in direct communication with the governor. Our federal delegation is in communication with us. We are in communication with our federal delegation. There's been letters on all sorts of issues. There's been bills moving through Congress that we have all been talking about. The, I think you hit on something important. The actions that we're taking now are, for one reason, and it's to save lives. And we have to take this seriously. And that means, no matter what party you are, you're stepping up. And the folks behind me, from the administration, are talking on an hourly basis with counterparts in other jurisdictions, with leaders in the county, with all of you all. So, we're continuing to adjust as the situation develops. So, to the best of our ability, we will be taking appropriate actions. And I don't have a crystal ball. I think you are correct that we are probably heading to a shelter-in-place, but I don't know that for sure. The governor has been taking a lot of very proactive steps. So, I don't foresee it to be something that one jurisdiction, Anarundel County, or Montgomery County, or Prince George's County, or whatever, would have to step out in front.
Okay. Good. The only other question that I had for you was with OEM. You indicated they're partially activated. Are there any expectations or plans to fully activate OEM in light of kind of the continuing growth of the curve, as we keep calling it?
That decision will be made on an ongoing basis. If you want, Chief Michaels can come up for a quick second.
Yeah. Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the council? There's really no plan immediately in the future to go to a full activation. One of the challenges, as we've talked about with this rapidly evolving situation, is a full activation would require us all to be in one place, which isn't very practical at this point.
Okay.
And the way this system is designed, the Department of Health is actually the lead, and they kind of ask us to coordinate the agencies in support of their effort. So, there are some agencies that aren't directly involved in that support effort. So, a full activation probably isn't very likely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, I think you know anyway, I live basically, I live in Jessup, practically on the border with Howard County. And I'm now aware that the first case in Maryland was actually in an assisted-living facility in Elkridge, which is like a mile and a half from where I live, and that the five-year-old child who tested positive for COVID-19 goes to school just a few miles up the road. I'm, looking at this situation, I think, you know, okay, I'm a mom, I have four kids, my husband has to leave the house to work, and I have to think in terms of incremental exposure as I make choices about what I'm going to do, what is our family going to do? And I'm concerned that maybe it's already a little bit too late. So, to try not to freak out, one of the things I did want to ask you about, whether this is your crystal ball, which might be, you know, Calvin ball, for all I know, you know, are there, are there any thoughts about potentially isolating counties from each other, or having regions that are, you know, smaller than the state, but perhaps bigger than a neighborhood, so that we can, in some way, try to limit the overall exposure? Like, my even coming here today exposes me to germs that are not near my house, right? And I'm sure that I know, I've gone to the grocery store that's nearest to the elementary school where that child went. I've gone past the, you know, there are gas stations, it's all along Route 1, everyone goes there. So, now I don't want to go there anymore, because I don't think that's safe. But, in trying to think of those terms, it's a little bit mind-boggling to understand whether we might even be able to implement that as an administrative action, or as a, you know, can the governor take that action? Can we take that action to say, you've got to stay within these regions, because we're trying, if you do, we know you're not exposing or being exposed to people in this other region that's smaller than our normal political units? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I would say that, well, there's a lot of problems incumbent with something like that, just based on the way the counties are set up. So, I think that would be very unlikely. I think if it gets to that level, based on what the governor's done so far, I would expect the state to take some action. And a shelter-in-place order, depending on the conditions attached to it, would have largely the same effect of keeping people separate and mostly where they are. I think there's always going to be some travel. From what I've seen in some other jurisdictions throughout the country, the, you know, there's a lot of discussion about what constitutes essential services that would remain open. And beyond, you know, the basic, which food, medication, many public services, including public safety, utilities, things like that, all those services that are absolutely necessary for people to be able to successfully shelter in place for the duration of this emergency, a lot of that requires travel. So, I would, that is an option. I think it's probably one of the last options we would want to exercise. As I said, we are trying to be very careful and very prudent about exercising any emergency powers whatsoever. So, we would look at that as an absolute last option. And I know, well, I don't know, but I suspect that every county attorney throughout the state of Maryland would not like to hear that come their way. So, I think that would be very low on the list. I think it's low on the list of possibility. I think it's low on the list of preference, just because of all the problems associated with it. I think a statewide declaration would be, is much more possible.
So, a statewide declaration might look more like, when we say shelter-in-place, it might be a radius, like three miles from your house, or five miles, or something, for activities other than the essential services, or?
Well, I doubt that there's going to be a radius, because that's very difficult to enforce. I think it would be more or less shelter-in-place unless you have a stated need to go out. And that would be to get medication, to get essential food supplies like that. I think that's much more likely to be a directive at behavior versus a directive at some specific area of travel.
Okay. And my other question is, what about having service that is needed, you know, to be able to come into your house? For example, I was outside yesterday, I noticed that my dryer vent is looking, you know, two-thirds of the way clogged. But, I have a lot of kids and a lot of laundry, so I'm going to fill up faster than some other folks, and I'm going to need somebody to come clean that out, which I was already planning for, but that time may come during all of this. And I'm wondering whether, I mean, say, if I called them today and said, can you come over? And then we all stayed outside, and they sprayed Lysol everywhere, and they went and did their thing, and then they left, and then we go back inside, maybe that's okay. But, maybe it's not okay under some possible shelter-in-place order or the definition of essential services. And I, I'm a little bit concerned that what that definition of essential services is, is going to be something that we're going to need to kind of work on together in some way, whether, you know, whether that's approving, as you say, there might be some order that we need to come and do an emergency ordinance for.
Well, I would expect, you know, if the governor issued an executive order to that effect, they would work pretty hard at defining the boundaries of that. And it's going to be a fluid thing, and there's going to be a lot of discretion, I think, in enforcing that, because if, for instance, you have five, well, you have six people living in a house, they're all sheltering in place, you're doing laundry, you don't want to risk a fire.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking.
So, you call somebody out to fix it. There's a pretty good argument that that is, there's an essentiality to that.
Right.
But, what they're trying, I think what most of those orders are trying to avoid is somebody saying, yeah, you know, I needed some more coke, so I ran to the store. That probably would not be viewed as an essential service. So, it really does require a lot of self-policing and responsibility among the citizens to really hunker down. And we may not have had things of this duration before, of uncertain duration before, but we're all pretty familiar with being socked in with a big snowstorm for a few days and how we deal with that. And that would be similar, I would think.
Yeah. I will just add to your point. I mean, it's going to be imperative on all of us to communicate over social media and in our networks. That's why the county executive is doing town halls, and I believe I neglected to mention, it's Saturday at 11:00 a.m. So, that's going to happen every, every week. Dr. Khalid Naraman is doing one every Wednesday. As this situation develops, answering questions like that is going to be essential, and we're going to have to be communicating clearly and consistently to folks, because, like you said, there are a lot of issues that will come up. I did not think of a dryer vent issue. And I'm going to check mine when I get home.
Good idea.
Mr. Pruski.
Just one quick follow-up, as we were heading down this discussion. I think it relates to this ordinance of Ms. Schuett, we're to here, focus on the ordinance, but I know we're also talking about planning, because what this ordinance does is allow the county executive to have powers. But, what's occurring in several other states is that they are now transforming, and this is because of the cases, not that we've gotten there yet, and I understand we have that, but, you know, high school turf fields are being turned into, you know, spots where military are bringing in tents. Of course, the National Guard's already been activated. There's been talk about the U.S. military even possibly supporting, you know, medical pieces. But, as far as the county prepping, and I've gotten this question, I think, from the Capitol. Somebody asked me, you can open Croneville Hospital. I thought I was joking, like, Croneville Hospital's not available to be opened. But, is there been that discussion? Because I know I've been, a few pastors and other people have conference centers or areas that they said, if you want to use for either triage, support, other things like that. But, in terms of the planning for the future, if it does get to the extent where we need sites, has the county been approached on where we'd have those things? Is there planning about, you know, where we'd ramp up, where we wouldn't?
So, I think it's important that whatever we do is coordinated and done through the Health Department and the Office of Emergency Management, and coordinated with our state partners in MEMA. So, the county has been looking at all our assets, but we need to do that in a coordinated and clear way through OEM and the Health Department.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to the governor's executive order and lowering the amount of people in a group to 10, I just want to clarify that if you are in a group of 10, and they are not the immediate family members living in your house, you should still execute social distancing. It doesn't mean 10 people, shoulder to shoulder. I think there has been confusion. I've driven by gatherings, 10 people, but they're shoulder to shoulder. So, can we clarify?
I'm not a health expert, but absolutely, you are correct. I think I ended my statement saying, you know, we all have to exercise common sense. So, when the administration walked in here, we're less than 10 people. Mr. Trumbauer instructed us all to remain six feet apart, and we did so.
Thank you.
First time they never listen to me.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on this emergency ordinance, 2420. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received by email, mail, or hand delivery to read into the record?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. The public hearing on Bill Number 2420 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 24-20.
Bill Number 24-20, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning General Provisions Civil Emergencies For the Purpose of Extending the Proclamation of Civil Emergency by the County Executive Through April 4, 2020, Or to Date the Civil Emergency Proclamation for the State of Maryland Is Approved to Be Renewed, Extended, or Terminated by the Governor of Maryland or the Maryland General Assembly, and Making This Ordinance an Emergency Measure.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments from my colleagues? I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the council and the staff and the administration for working through this meeting today. We have taken pretty serious precautions this morning. We are, as we move forward with the county council business, we have a bipartisan working group to see how this council will function in the near future, and so, stay tuned, everybody. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 24-20.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 2420 is passed.
Is there any other business to be brought before the county council this morning? Mr. Volkey?
Just when you're ready, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until further notice. To everyone listening and watching, please continue to check the website for further information and important updates. Please continue to follow all directives and recommendations from the governor and the county executive. We are all working hard to protect you in the best way possible.
Thank you all.